I'll just start her off at seven.
All right, we should be live and.
I'll just start her off at seven.
On YouTube, Kerry, can you double check that for me and make sure we're going on YouTube?
Yes, give me just one second.
Chris is Mark. Jason's trying to get on and he says it just pulled up.
Okay, that's good.
We are live.
So we just confirmed we're live on channel twenty-three and YouTube now, so Pete, whenever you're ready to go.
Okay, my computer says six fifty-nine, so I'll just wait a minute if that's okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I think we're close enough. The hour up, our being seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order and instead of the pledge allegiance, let's just have a moment of silence for all the victims of the COVID. Okay, guys, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Councilman Shetrin.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shetrin, seconded by Councilman Berg. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is citizen requests and other communications. Does anybody have any input or questions from anybody out in the audience that we're supposed to be addressing?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Zimmerman.
Yes, Jim.
I got a call from constituent that asked if we know when there might be the parks and the playgrounds to open up.
Well, I see Brad Rainey's on, maybe he can answer that question.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Sorry, there's a window behind me. The parks are open right now. The playgrounds, like the slides and the swings are closed. This is a CDC recommendation. As soon as they recommend that children and people can return to playgrounds, we will reopen them. But that's not really a decision that I've made or we've made. That's, that's a recommendation from the health professionals.
Very good. Thank you, Brad.
Good question, Jim. Anybody else?
Mayor, I don't have any.
Okay, moving on, we've got council action. You don't have anything, Kerry?
No, we have nothing that was emailed in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then moving on, council action items, item five, A, consideration to award the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project. Again, this is the project was, that was tabled at the council meeting on April seventh, two thousand and twenty. This is to bring the motion back before the council for approval. I'm assuming that we all know what this is all about. We don't need staff to discuss this at the moment, or does anybody want an update from the staff?
No.
Mayor?
Okay. Yes.
I moved on table. Councilman Berg, the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project, Jackman Construction, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents per the revised bid and authorized the mayor to sign the agreement with amendments.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Mayor, Lisa seconded that.
Lisa did?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, it just didn't come over on mine. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, how about suggested motion number two, anybody?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Mays.
I move to reconsider the award of the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project to Jackman Construction, Inc., in the amount of one seventy thousand, three ninety-five fifty per the revised bid and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with amendments.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Mays. Was that you, Councilman Kilpak?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Kilpak. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. How about motion number three?
Mayor.
Councilman Kilpak.
Actually, Murphy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
I moved, I moved award the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project to Jackman Construction, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents per the revised bid and authorized the mayor to sign the agreement with amendments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilman Kilpak. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Berg.
I just wanted to ask if Mark could go ahead and give us a, an explanation again as to why there was such a difference in the bid price between the two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Weston, School Public Works Director. We originally received two bids for this project. The project as originally conceived included a water line on North Third West that would run from Railroad Avenue up to Flaming Gorge, then jump over Flaming Gorge and go from Flaming Gorge up to the alley and then run down the alley to North Second West. When we evaluated the bids, we did see that there was a discrepancy in the bulk of that discrepancy existed in the alley portion. That was a portion that we were wanting to do and with a trenchless method to minimize the impacts on the, in that narrow alley. And it was clear to us that there was potentially some confusion on the, how to approach that element of the work. And we just really weren't comfortable with the way that those, the discrepancy that existed on those, on that aspect of the work. So we removed that element of the work, the alley portion, and just, we're going to keep the work in North Third West, which is a more straightforward piece. And the, the bid prices on, on that element were, were, the discrepancy was not nearly as wide, so we feel more confident on that one.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mark?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Zimmerman.
Councilman Zimmerman.
Mark, can, can you emphasize the need for this project? Given the expenditure at this moment, I'd like to hear from staff if this is necessary to be done at this time? Or not.
One, one of the values of this project is the, the fire flow, the fire coverage in that area. We have in that vicinity, there is not a water line currently between Railroad Avenue and Flaming Gorge. That, that's a gap in the system. And what that does is it requires all the flow to be through the alley to, to feed the fire hydrants that are right there next to Super Eight Motel and Jaeger's Construction as well as the other areas within, within that block radius. By completing this project, we will be able to improve the fire flow in that vicinity considerably. And, and from a safety perspective, that is, it will also lessen the reliance on some of our older lines for moving that fire flow. It'll tie in some more bigger and better lines, the newer lines, and loop that system better.
Okay, thank you, Mark. The reason I brought it up is last Wednesday, our governor stated at the state level that he's directing agencies to immediately reduce spending. He's in, in also through that asking for position freezes all to general fund contracts greater than a hundred thousand dollars and review major maintenance spending. And I, you know, I see this is over a hundred thousand dollars. The state is trying to freeze things that aren't extremely necessary right now. And so I just wanted to bring that up. It's, it's just a, a little awkward to be doing it right now, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kilpak. I, I could see the mayor's picture's gone. Are you, can you still hear us, Mayor? Mark, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is this money six penny money or is this out of regular budget?
This is actually water fund money. This is monies that are part of that enterprise fund for water system improvements and maintenance.
And, and it's been budgeted for this year, has it been?
Exactly. We, we budgeted, actually, I believe we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for water improvements this year and, and we've reduced it to this one, one seventy to be done this year.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, I did have one question as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mark. This is Councilman Shetrin. Mark, one of the last discussions that we, we had was, there was some concerns with change orders and I just want to know how are change orders taken care of? Is that something that we actually, is this, this bid set up to not allow a change order?
All of our contracts have language built in that address the conditions under which a change order can be granted. Generally, the change orders that we've seen since I've been here have been, for the most part, they've been ameliorations to projects. We've been in a project and we've decided, you know, while we're here, we've got some decent prices, let's go ahead and do a little bit more while we're here. That's been the majority of the change orders, or as some have mentioned before, a lot of our projects are ending with a negative change order at the end, will come under budget. There are occasionally times when we'll run into an unforeseen condition. And that's the, the conditions of the contract spell out that in those situations where we run into an unforeseen condition, we as an engineering staff will work with the contractor to identify a resolution to that. And there are times when we'll need to do an additive change order to address an unforeseen condition that does happen. And it's the, the terms of the contract are established in the contract.
Typically due to change in the scope of work.
Generally, but sometimes it'll be, we'll run into an unforeseen condition. Maybe there'll be bad soil or maybe there'll be a utility that we weren't expecting that we'll have to get around. Just, you know, when, when you're working underground, there's all kinds of, of things you can't see. So those conditions do exist within the contract and they have good reason to. But in general, we, we try to avoid those and try to do a good job designing upfront so we can have more of the, the zero change order or the deductive change order at the end.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Mayor? I have, I have another question.
Yes.
Mark, this been an enterprise fund? If, the, do I understand it correctly that that money cannot be moved over to the general fund to be used? It has to be used inside that enterprise fund?
That's correct. The enterprise funds, we have currently, I guess we have three enterprise funds. Solid Rich one still exists for maintenance, but for the most part, we have two active general, excuse me, enterprise funds, the water fund and the wastewater fund. And those are monies that are generated through user fees. And those monies are dedicated to those funds, the water to the water and the wastewater to the wastewater. It's possible for the general fund to supplement enterprise funds, but it's not possible to move enterprise money into a general fund.
So, so if I understand you correctly, then to meet the direction that we have by the governor, that Councilman Zimmerman brought up, using this money in the enter, enterprise funds would still meet his recommendations. Am I correct with that?
Yes, and, and I understand that, you know, the, the state operates somewhat in the same way. They have more than just the general fund. They have the transportation fund and things like that. And they're going to be pursuing projects in some of those designated funds as well. The, it's my understanding of the governor's statement was related to the general fund, which I, I can understand what he's trying to do there, but here we're using, these are local funds that we're using for this project that are the, the water enterprise fund that's been set aside for this project.
Okay, and I appreciate your answer because I would not want to do anything that's not in harmony with, with the guidance that we're getting from our governor. So, thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consideration of an agreement to form, to perform topographic survey services for an ADA improvement project. Go ahead, Mark.
Mayor, I think you skipped one. We had a, a second aspect of the water project.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration award the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project Materials Testing.
Mayor and Council, this is a tag along to the other project. For, for most of these capital projects that we pursue, there's a certain amount of specialized materials testing that we need to have done for the compaction and for both the soils and the asphalt. And we just want to have this one ride with that other project that, that this is testing to be specific to that project.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions of Mark before I ask for a motion?
I've got one, Mayor.
Okay, let's have a motion. Go, go ahead.
Is this under the same enterprise fund?
Go ahead, Councilman Berg.
Yes, Councilman Berg, this is also enterprise fund. It'll be out of that same project, the program budget line item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mayor? I move to untable, I move to untable the, I move to untable the award of the professional service contract to William H. Smith and Associates Incorporated for construction materials testing services for the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we've got item C, consideration of an agreement to perform topographic survey services for an ADA improvements project. Go ahead, Mark. Yes.
Mayor, I think we had to have a second motion on that. We just, all we did is untable it.
Oh, I'm sorry. And a third, and a third motion.
Correct, yes.
Go ahead, let's have this, go ahead, get Councilman Kilpak.
I move to reconsider the award of a professional service contract with William H. Smith and Associates Incorporated for construction materials testing services for the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Kilpak and seconded by Councilman Murphy. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now the suggested motion number three.
Mayor.
Councilman Berg?
I move to award a professional service contract to William H. Smith and Associates, Inc., for the construction materials testing services for the 2020 North Third West Water Improvement Project in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, it's, it's been moved by Councilman Berg, seconded by Councilwoman Mays. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to item C. Consideration of an agreement to, to perform topographic survey services for an ADA improvements project. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is still Mark. So last summer, we applied for a transportation alternatives program grant through YDOT. And these are grants that are used for transportation projects that are not vehicular. They're pedestrian type projects. And the project that we proposed was to rebuild ADA ramps at and sidewalks between essentially Bridger and Alabama along East Eaton. There are several areas in there where we have school buses that pick up the children. It's near Harrison School. The Green Belt pathway crosses right there. There's some stormwater conflicts with the, with the pedestrian facilities there. And this was deemed to be a worthy project by the White, by the Transportation Commission at the state. And they awarded us this grant. It's a grant that is an eighty-twenty. So for every dollar we put in, the state is putting in four. So that's a, a pretty good deal for us. And this would be the first step would be to get the survey done. After the survey, we can design that project and submit it in for YDOT's review. And we would be looking to build this project next summer.
Okay, hey, thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions for Mark? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Zimmerman.
Councilman Zimmerman.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Inberg Miller Engineers to perform topographic survey services for the city's ADA improvements project in the amount of five thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Zimmerman, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, consideration to approve the Sweetwater County two thousand and thirteen specific purpose tax joint powers board dissolution agreement. Who's going to speak to this one?
Mayor and Council, this is, I guess I can turn my video on. So the, the six penny projects for the last ones have, have completed. If you guys remember, we bonded that project out. With that, we formed the six penny board and a, and a basically joint power board of sorts to manage that money for that. Makes it a little easier with that. Since then, all the funds have been collected that that board needs to pay off the bonds. The bonds have been subsequently paid off. And at this point, they're asking to dissolve the board. There's, the board doesn't need any more work. And it's fairly typical when the bonds are paid off and if, if the new six penny comes back on and is re-voted on, a new, a new board is reappointed at that time and our new joint board is formed. Because all the players change a little bit differently in those every time. So with that, they, they'd like to dissolve that board at this time and that's what's being brought forward to use a letter of dissolution of that board.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions for Chris? Okay, let's have a motion.
Mayor.
Councilman Shetrin.
I move to approve the Sweetwater County two thousand and thirteen specific purpose, no wait. Yes, for special, specific purpose tax joint power board dissolution agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shetrin, seconded by Councilman Berg. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, three of you, which one wants to go?
Lisa.
Okay, Councilwoman Mays.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Mays, seconded. Was that you, Jim?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Zimmerman. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, city administrators report. Reed?
Yes, hello. Good evening. At least this week, it seems like technology's gotten a little bit better. Still some delays and, and Gary, you are a loud person with some papers, my friend. Anyway, just a, a quick couple of things. As we are in our, the third week of our adjusted schedules, we do expect to hear something within the next day or two from the governor regarding the. the issues starting to open back up. If you look across the country, we are probably still part of that first phase already, just from what was implemented. I think we've been doing a good job. We've been able to basically manage keeping this stuff down. And we also have been working internally in how we're going to manage that, looking at all the departments. We'll probably take steps based on based on those directives and how we bring like the rec center and, for example, the parks and that kind of stuff up. So we'll we'll be make sure we communicate that here in the next week and two. We've also, just as an FYI, we just for the council, that the community is protecting the green. They've been having a number of meetings. There's a lot of stuff that's been going on with regard to water rights and that kind of stuff. We are needing to, they are going to send out, the committee will be sending out a letter with the change of scope. That scope change is looking to take some of the power from the committee and then delivering that back to the elected officials. We'll go into more detail on that as that gets defined, but just giving you a heads up that that's something that's coming down the pipe. We do have a finance committee meeting next Monday, and we would like to, hopefully by Friday, get something out to the entire council in terms of review. We'll also then go and then after the finance committee meeting, we'll send an update back out to the entire council following that. That you know, just for just for a point of reference to the the governor's directive that had came out, that is definitely different. It's not a directive from the governor to the cities. It's a directive from the governor to his to the state to that, as they are. Trying to get a hold of their costs. They're going to be much more impacted in terms of gas and oil and that stuff because of how specifically how the schools are, they get paid and the money amount that comes from there. They are going to, you know, they're going to have a tough time as this comes out of the 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 doldrums, if you will. Most of our, you know, revenues, of course, is sales tax. We're also going to be hit. We will also be looking at that direction. But it's not, you know, we're, it's not a, just so you know, it's not a directive from the governor to the cities. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor, Councilman.
Okay, thank you, Reed. Does anybody have any questions of Reed?
Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead.
One question. What what time is that? Is that one o'clock that budget meeting?
Yes, that would be one o'clock. We will send out a Zoom meeting on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, Galen, do you have anything for us?
That'd be no report, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have no word for it. Okay.
Thanks, Galen. Okay, gotcha. Well, we're all getting used to this a little bit. It's going much better than last year. Okay, let's start with council reports. Council, I'm just going to look at my screen and go down. Councilman Shutron.
I have no report.
Okay. Councilwoman Mace.
I don't have any council report either.
Okay. Councilman Murphy.
I'd like to thank the city for allowing the fire department to do the birthday drive bys for the kids. We've been very busy and this next week, we've got probably seven or eight that we're doing in the next two weeks. So I'd just like to thank the city for allowing them, allowing us to do that with the police department and the county people too. It brings a lot of happiness to the kids' faces.
All right, well, good job, Tom. Councilman Bird?
Just wanted to say that, you know, with us doing these meetings over Zoom, there are some conveniences to doing that. But I don't want any of you guys to get used to it because I somewhat miss seeing you guys in person. All I've got.
All right, good job, Robert. Councilman Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I had was on the playgrounds and Brad answered that very well. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Kilpak.
I just have one thing. I I had a citizen call me and they've got a a power post that light, street light that's out. And can I just give you that number? Reed?
Yes, that's fine.
The number is zero, five, one, no, that's wrong. Start over. Zero, five, two, one, eight, one, zero, seven, three, four, five, six, zero, zero.
Okay, we'll find out if that will most likely is PP&L's, but we can get it reported.
Right. Usually they, when we've done that before, they just come and fix it. It's a ballast that's out. So okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Council, we have one more. Not that it matters, but we have one more Tuesday in this month. We can do it anytime. But did you guys want to workshop for anything or you want to kind of wait on that a little bit?
I would kind of like to do the workshops in person.
I agree.
Agreed. What did he say?
Said he prefer the workshops in person.
Right, yeah, I do too.
Okay, well, we've got at least six, so.
And my guess is, Mayor Russ, that, you know, after May, whatever, that probably in terms of that level, setting up a workshop in the depending on what it is within the chambers, we could definitely meet some of the social distancing aspects. But again, we'll have to see what that is.
Okay. So the only thing I want to then say is, since you gave me a good lead in, I'm going to read the rules. Stay stay safe. Don't congregate in groups. Social distance of six feet. Stay home if you're sick. And ideally, if you can, only one person shop in the grocery store so we can limit the numbers down. So everybody stay safe. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Councilman Shutron.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's moved moved by Councilman Shutron, seconded by Councilwoman Mace. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Much smoother this week. Good job, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.